Thank you, April. Fair criticism, joining the institute with flag or great nation. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everybody can just remain standing for a moment for our troops, their families, and for all our first responders. Thank you. Okay, workshop discussion. The other thing I want to bring up in the workshop discussion is we're going to table our bond ordinance after we had some discussions with our CFO and our auditor. We did have some significant savings in the first 10 months that we've been in power. One of the things is the 3,000 hours of overtime that we saved up to Labor Day, which equated to about 110,000. And reworking and the way we hired people and everything, our health benefits, we almost saved half a million dollars in the health benefits cost. So, we were going to put all that in capital improvements and start to come up with a plan of three, five, and 10-year plan of things that we need to have done, but because of the situation that we're in, we think that we should table this, retake a look at it, and see if we can try to handle some of it on our own without causing any more debt. The million dollars, I don't know if everybody was here last meeting, but the million dollars, when we put the budget together, we had to put a million dollars back into the beach utility because it was a million dollars taken out a few years ago, and the Department of Community Affairs who signs off on our budget would not sign off of it until we could almost guarantee that we're going to put it back this year. But talking to our auditor, he doesn't think that it has to be by January 1. He thinks that as long as we get it done before the next budget comes out, that he should be okay with that. So, we're going to be in discussions for the next couple of weeks with our auditor just to see what we can do. The other thing, if anybody has any questions on that? So, we're going to table that ordinance tonight until we can let the auditor see if I'll take a, retake a look at that. You guys can look at it. Any questions?
No questions.
The only other thing I want to bring up is our business administrator, Ed Kirshbaum, has a friend that does a lot of cleaning out of offices when they move out. So, he was able to, since the last meeting, get some more office furniture that we need at no cost, and they were able to get two pallets of copy paper. I know it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's $7,000 worth of copy paper. So, every little bit helps, and thank you, Ed, for doing all that. I think we got probably about $20,000 off of that.
Good job.
So, I just wanted to bring that up because we were watching every penny. So, I think that's all I have in the workshop. You guys have anything? Anyone working on, doing workshop? Pat?
No.
Okay. All right. Moving on to petitions. Anyone have a petition in the audience that they want to present to Mayor and Council? All right. Seeing none, April, approve the ordinance.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the September 17 meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Walser?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Reports, Council. Councilman Carmelli?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Walser. Okay. So, I guess I could have put this in the workshop discussion, but the tax assessors have been working on going back and reviewing closed-out permits to make sure that the proper tax assessments were advised, were assessed. And basically, he found that we're going to be getting approximately $211,000 before the end of the year in retroactive back assessments. So, this stems from when permits get closed out, that the assessor is not going out and helping the assessment on the properties. I guess he found that a number of, I guess, either permits that were not reassessed or what have you. But at the end of the day, it looks like there'll be a $211,000 revenue, one-shot revenue for this year, but it represents somewhere around $100,000 in ongoing additional revenue from property taxes. So, I thought that that was a good thing, and we're going to continue to make sure that the due diligence is performed on these sorts of things. Over the weekend was the kite festival, which I attended. That was well-attended, had great weather, there was a lot of people there. The, let's see, I have the police explorers. We had that meeting about a week ago. We have about 10 children signed up. We're going to also do another recruiting drive in the schools instead of having it on Saturday and having them come here. We're going to actually go, probably sit in like whatever, the cafeteria or something like that and do a recruiting drive there. I know we'll be looking to have an organization meeting towards the end of the year. This went out over Code Red earlier today and it's also out on social media, that we'll be switching back to the municipal water system from, no, from our municipal water well system, which we are on in the summer, to American Water. Hydro flushing is going to start on the week of the 7th, and they're going to be doing that overnight. Should you experience any sort of low pressure or discoloration, well, you're going to probably experience some low pressure in the area, but if you experience any discoloration, just run your faucet for a little bit until it clears out. And finally, we've gotten a lot of feedback from residents that a lot of the street workers were looking a little ragged. So, over the past several weeks, DPW has been going out to repair and paint those, and that effort is now complete. So, please take note of that, and again, thanks to the DPW team for taking care of that. That is all that I have. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman McCracken.
I've got to tell you, one of the best things about living in Belmar is meeting a lot of people who are willing to give back to their community. We have a local mason and landscaper who has children at the Belmar Elementary School who would like to improve the front entrance of the school. The Department of Public Works has some pavers that were donated to us from various jobs where this material was left over, and this local landscaper and mason would like to improve the front entrance to the school by replacing the walks with pavers, including the area around the flagpole, planting new shrubberies, trepperies, and that kind of thing. So, I spoke with Superintendent Hallman today, who was very enthusiastic about the idea, and we're getting a meeting set up for some morning next week to meet with this landscaper to go over what his plans are. But all this will be done at no cost to anybody. He is donating his time and the time of his crew. The materials have been donated, and it sounds like it's really a great thing. And he's doing it just because he loves Belmar, he wants to give back. He's got some kids in the school who I guess are going to be leaving there and going on to their next grade, and he wants to have, he just feels that he's so grateful for the education his kids have gotten and the experience that he's had here as a resident in Belmar that he wants to do this. And I think it's just awesome, and I'm looking forward to that meeting next week. We continue down our path of fiscal responsibility with the streamlining municipal services. I'm liaison to the Department of Public Works. In 2018, we had 14 part-time people who worked seasonally in the marina, the parks, working with trash and recycling. In 2009, we did the same job with nine people. And I think that our town this summer, as far as the maintenance of all of our parks and areas and beach and areas that were required to maintain, look good. So, we're doing less than more, and that's also including two less full-time employees in the Department of Public Works. I know that Director Campbell received a lot of fun criticism after Sandy, when he obtained a lot of surplus military equipment, and people made a lot of jokes that he was going to invade Avon and Seagirt and everywhere else. But obviously, his concern was about the safety of Belmar residents after the horrific superstorm Sandy, and that equipment was made available to municipalities at no cost. He has gotten rid of a lot of that equipment, and this year, he's already gotten $34,000 for equipment that he's gotten rid of. He still has some equipment he wants to sell, either scrap or sell at auction. Some of the stuff he can't sell at auction because it's armored equipment, and the military or the government does not allow that equipment to be sold at auction, has to be returned. But just a perfect example is, you know, we have three bulldozers, Vietnam-era bulldozers that we got after superstorm Sandy, and they were used annually to build the dunes to protect us in the winter from storms and that kind of thing. When the state came in and our new beach management plan was approved, we are no longer allowed to construct those dunes on an annual basis. So, we got rid of them. We had three, now we have one, and from the two that we got rid of, the parts were salvaged to reduce maintenance cost of the bulldozer, the one remaining bulldozer that we have in town for, you know, when it's needed, for when you can build dunes if storms are coming and that kind of thing. So, we're streamlining that department, we're inventorying equipment, we're getting rid of excess equipment, and we're being smart about how we do it, which I think is definitely a way to heading in the right direction. The Shade Tree Commission met last week. I was away on a work trip, but we have two new members there, which brought a lot of new energy to the Shade Tree Commission and are just going to be fantastic members of that group, have a lot of ideas, and are doing a lot of research. So, we welcome them, and we look forward to that commission continuing its good work. On Sunday morning, Councilman Carmelli and I had a chance to meet our volunteers, our very dedicated volunteers down at the Union Fire Company, and we got a tour of that building and of their equipment. I can't say we were surprised at what they shared with us. We've talked about this before in council meetings, but we definitely have a very serious issue with our infrastructure here in the borough that has been neglected for many years. One of their first response pumpers is 1983, so that is something that, you know, in the future, we need to prioritize, getting them equipment that's reliable and not rusted. The roof of that building is leaking. They've held off on doing any renovations to areas that they want to renovate. Those volunteers there at the fire company not only respond to fires, but they maintain the interior of those municipal-owned buildings. But as you can imagine, they're reluctant to put in new sheet rock and new carpeting and flooring and things like that, that desperately means when you have a leaky roof that's going to, you know, obviously ruin things when water comes down into that building. We have tin ceilings in the old municipal room there that are rusting. It's really kind of sad because it's a very storage structure and very beautiful in many ways, and when the roof leaks, the water is running down behind the bricks in the front of the building and getting behind the windows, and the historic facade there is actually bone. So, you know, the mayor mentioned this in the workshop discussion, but we really need to have our engineer take a good look at all of our infrastructure and all our needs. We need to come up with a three, five, and 10-year plan to maintain our buildings, to maintain our equipment, so we can keep our people safe, so that our volunteers can respond to fires, and we need to, fires and obviously medical emergencies and other things. And we need to do this plan, and we need to budget it over this period of time, obviously, without any additional tax increases. So, you know, it's disappointing when you go into some of these buildings to see the neglect that they're in and the condition that they're in, but I know this council's committed to being very smart about it, come up with a plan to replace roofs and mechanical equipment and fire trucks and other public safety equipment in a streamlined way so that we can provide services to our residents. So, that's something that is certainly a priority and that we'll be working on.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wong.
Do you want to do the proclamation?
Yeah, you can do the proclamation.
I'll turn on mic. Thank you, ma'am. Before I start on my report, I have a proclamation to read, designating the month of October in each year as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer, since NBCAM's inception, mammography use has doubled and breast cancer death rates have declined. Still, many women do not utilize mammography as regular, at regular intervals. Whereas in recognition of the fact that mammography is the best available method of detecting breast changes that may be cancerous long before physical symptoms can be seen or felt, and that breast cancer deaths could decline further if all women age 40 and older receive mammograms at regular intervals. Whereas, October 2019 marks the 35th anniversary of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which is dedicated to increasing awareness of breast cancer issues, especially the importance of early detection. And now, therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council of the borough of Belmar, County of Monmouth, State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. All women and their families in the borough of Belmar, County of Monmouth, and State of New Jersey are urged to get the facts about mammography and breast cancer detection. Now, from my report, first, I'd like to thank everybody who came to the Run for the Fallen on Sunday. It was just wonderful to see everybody come out. I want to thank our fire department, Chief Brad Child, Mike, everybody who was involved in making these, soldiers start the run in Cape May, and they run to the PNC Art Center. It was just really impressive, and you didn't have a dry eye when they came up to Sergeant Gonzalez's family. He lost his life in Iraq, and they came up to the parents and saluted them. It was a beautiful thing to say, very touching too, and I want to thank everybody who participated, and we hope that next year also we'll continue this run. The community policing program, we've gotten through this summer, and now we're going to have a meeting coming up with the zone chiefs next week to follow, and then to follow with the meeting with the block captains, and we're going to summarize everything that's done on this summer and get prepared for the winter, because in the winter, we still need the policing program. It's very important because, as you know, the rentals in winter change very much from what they are in the summer. So, we have, we're going to be continuing our program. It's been very successful so far, and we want to keep it going. Now for Parks and Recreation, going forward, I've finally met with the representative of the company who's going to make the benches for us, the memorial benches. So, now we can go forward. The applications have been made. I'm going to get them out to everybody who's been on the list, who's been waiting all these years for the benches. So, I have the applications for them, so I'll be in contact, and if there's anybody else out there who would like to have a memorial bench, just email me through the Bureau and/or call Nancy at the Bureau, and we will go forward with this. That's, I'm very happy about that. Now, we have some things from Recreation. We're having a Belmar walking group. Belmar Recreation invites you to stay fit this fall. On Wednesdays at 6 o'clock, October through November, meet at the First Avenue on the boardwalk, and it's open to all abilities, and I'll have a beautiful walk on the boardwalk for October. Coming up is the Belmar Halloween contest and parade, and it's a trunk or treat. I don't know if you know what that, those are. It's something new. The cars pull up, or we're in, they have fire trucks, some police will be there, and they have candy for the kids. Instead of going door-to-door, it's out of the trunk of the car. So, we do have applications if there's a family. We have some families who donated their time and candy to this event, and it's going to take place on October 27th from 1 to 2, and that's going to be in the parking lot. The parade, registration is from 11 to 11:45. The judging is at 11:45, and the parade is at 12:15. And then following that will be the trunk or treat, an announcement of the winners, which will take place at Piano Plaza. So, Danny White's going to be there, so the kids can rock and roll and dance and perform in their costumes, which will be a lot of fun. Age divisions are preschool, kindergarten to first, second to fourth, fifth to eighth, and groups. So, the categories, you know, scariest, funniest, and whatever. It's just a great time for kids. Halloween is just the best time, and it's best for parents to steal candy. So, that's my report, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wong. Councilwoman Wong. I just have a few things, because you guys took off everything I was going to say. Yeah, I just want to echo with Councilwoman Wong stated about the Fall Heroes Run. I mean, I really have to, you know, recognize the fire department, they came down, they put up the ladder, they put up the big flag for the run under. You know, they come all the way from Cape May, and they do, every stop that they do, they recognize another family, and I think, what is it, 190 families in New Jersey that have lost loved ones in the war. So, it was touching, and if, you know, if anybody missed it, next year, they, you know, they do it every year, so, and it's good to really come out and see, and see what they do. I really got to give a lot of credit to Mike Campbell, DPW, and the fire department for everything that they did for that run. The other thing I want to bring up is we had the Mayor's Ball Friday night. We call it the Mayor's Ball, but it's a fundraiser for our rec programs and youth programs. I want to thank everybody that came out because it was way oversold. We had a, it was cozy, to say the least, but, and I want to thank all of our sponsors because I don't have the final numbers yet, but it was better than expectations, and I'll have a report of, you know, after we pay all the bills and see what's left for the next meeting, but it was better than expectations. So, and that's, that's all I have tonight. So, we're going to move on to public session, not any of the consent items. Anybody has any questions about the consent agenda? All right.
Can I have a motion to close the public session?
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Can I have a motion to approve the resolutions as listed on the consent agenda?
Second.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Walser?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Next, can I have a motion to table ordinance 201932?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Walser?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Next, we have second reading and public hearing on ordinance 201933. This is open for public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this ordinance, please step forward, state your name and address.
All right. Seeing none, April.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? And can I have a motion to adopt ordinance 201933?
So.
Okay, Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Walser?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Next, we have public hearing on ordinance 201934, amending traffic, traffic section 19. There was a change to this ordinance. The timeframe was changed from 9, it was 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. It's been changed to 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM. This ordinance is open for public hearing, if anyone would like to speak on it. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor? And then a motion to adopt ordinance 201934 as amended?
Make the motion.
Second. Okay. Councilwoman Wong?
Yes.
Mayor Walser?
Yes.
Councilman McCracken?
Yes.
Councilman Carmelli?
Yes.
Okay. Public session. Anybody have anything that they want to talk about? The council. Jim?
Hello, everybody. This is Jim Bean, 6th Hill, 16th Ave. Could you just explain how we borrowed money from the beach utility? Was it last year? How did it happen?
I'm not exactly sure, but I think it was borrowed to start the outfall pipe, the lakehead outfall pipe. I don't think the proper bonding was done, and they took the million dollars out of the beach utility to start that project. I can't be 100% certain, but I'm trying to think back to where the million dollars was taken out of the beach. So, it's been a couple of years now, and the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs wants that utility fully funded, back-funded again, so.
So, they filled out paperwork to give to Community Affairs?
I think what you could do is you could do, correct me if I'm wrong, I was just asking, but I think you can do these near-fund transfers, but you have to put the money back.
It's like savings accounts.
They took the million out, and they never put it back. So, when we're trying to get our budget done, we can't go another year to get our budget approved until that million dollars is back. Now, we have a lot of debt in the beach utility, so what we're going to do is we had, if we still have to borrow the money, we're going to put it in the beach utility, and we're going to pay down some, we're going to take that million and pay right down the debt. So, like when I talked with, you know, when I talked about it was going to be a wash, but it's, you know, technically, we're borrowing in one account, and then we're reducing the debt in another account. So, we might still have to do that after the auditor and CFO take a look at it, but that's what we're looking at.
I'm just, there's going to be a paper trail. Was it in the budget like three or four years ago that they did it? Was it in appropriations?
It was in the order report, yeah.
Just the order report. All right. Would you borrow from the beach utility to pay back that loan? You know, would you?
Well, no, no, no. The beach utility has debt, has debt because of the prevailing, about 10th Avenue prevailing, which we're, you know, we're supposed to give money from FEMA, but it's not coming. So, that's the debt that I would take the million and pay down, pay some of the debt down on the 10th Avenue prevailing.
From that line, you mean?
If we have to bond the million dollars and we have to put it back in the beach utility, we're going to take that million and then we're going to pay down the debt that's on the 10th Avenue prevailing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Bruce.
Bruce Blatner, 407 9th Avenue. I want to just take this on an opportunity to thank you, Mayor Walser, the council, the residents of the town, for bestowing the honor of Citizen of the Year. It's an honor that I will always remember and cherish, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
It was well deserved. We'd have to go forward and pick out a candidate for this year.
Thank you, Mayor.
But yes, congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Tom? We'd have to go forward and pick out a candidate for this year.
Thank you, mayor.
But yes, congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, Tom. Did you go to Paris, too?
Pardon?
You were, did you leave it? You were left out of that trip to Paris? I see your daughter was over there.
Am I a child blubber? I just wanted to know if you can tell us anymore about the FEMA, the million bucks that they won. It seems strange to me that they wait seven years to tell us we paid too much for the boardwalk, but I don't know if that's exactly what's happening. So I thought maybe you could.
Well, what they did was, and this is the federal government, because it's pretty funny, but it's not funny, because it's hard money anyway, but they paid us, they paid us with the calculations that I guess Robin and Colleen put together, and they sent it out. And instead of FEMA doing the audit at the time to say, do they deserve this money, they just cut the check and sent it over. And then all this time later, they do an audit. And they said, guess what? We overpaid a million bucks and we want it back. So we're in the process right now of seeing if they're right and going, you know, our auditors and CFO and engineers are taking a look at all to see where they came, if it's a mistake, first of all. And, I mean, if it is, and we owe it back, we still have the $700,000 in buyboard money. So we're not really in super bad shape, but it's just, you know, it's strange to us that they cut this check to us, and then they go, whoops, we made a mistake, we want a million bucks back. So we're not, we're, believe me, we're not handing over a million bucks real fast, so.
Thank you.
It'll, we're checking it out and finding out what the problem was.
Appreciate that. The other question I have, is there anything new on the senior center that we haven't already read in the papers?
Well, we're working with the library, because that all falls underneath the library, and Bruce is on the library board. So we're working with that and, you know, looking at all different areas, all different places that it might have to be divided up, where yoga's maybe in the gym, Makerspace is going to go somewhere else. We're also looking at some rentals in town, because the building costs us a lot of money in utilities, even though we weren't paying any kind of rent. It was almost like $20,000 a year on utilities. So, you know, we can take that money and take a look at it, maybe rent a space in town, but we're not looking to get rid of any of those programs, but we're, the library is paying a lot of it, so we have to really work with the library and see what we're going to do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead. Want to ask a question?
Yeah, can I ask you a question? Can I ask the mayor a question? About Taylor Pavilion, God knows we've paid a fortune for that place. Why do we have to look to other places? Can't we have, there's nothing nicer than having yoga there and look at the sun coming up in the morning.
No, we can do that.
Can't we put all that stuff there?
The Makerspace is a little bit different. That's a little different, because, you know, you have all that equipment.
Right.
So that's a little bit different, but the yoga and a lot of the, yeah, we can do that.
Then it wouldn't cost us anything, and we just need a one-stop.
Yeah, well, we got our gym, and so we got a lot of different places for that, but the Makerspace is probably the biggest. And the senior center is the two spots that we really have.
Look at these Taylor for senior center. They're having their weddings on weekend nights.
Yeah, and they have all their stuff there that they keep there, so, you know, we have to look at something like that.
Thank you, ma'am.
We'll be looking. They're not throwing it, just to make it clear, they're not throwing us out on the 7/31st. They are, they're not signing a lease, so we have a little bit of time to work with what we have right now until we find something. They're just not signing a lease. We can still stay there until they make their deal with whatever developer they're looking at, but then once that deal is made, but, you know, it's something that we got to start working on, so. I just want to put that out there. Anybody else? Okay, April?
Motion to close the public session and adjourn the meeting.
Make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight.